Can you get two sides? Well, you can get your choice of two appetizers. And then steak and two sides. And then cheesecake. So it's a nice meal. And Lyne and Lur does something too for the...
I knew they had.
I had a seafood boil. Yeah. No. I don't remember now, like, lining this Wednesday's or Thursday's.
Is the signature file up?
The file's not there all day, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's just sitting up there. The file may be.
I'd like to go get the ribeye at Tom Urban's. And they don't have only just french fries. They have loaded taters. So it's got cheese sauce and bacon cobbles and stuff. It forces baked potato with your steak. But their salad is also good. They have some.
Oh, says Lyne.
Oh, on the... Oh, it's on here. Gotcha. Okay. Kevin, that's my old... Jim, you said Jim? Okay. Sign page four, initial page two, three, four, five, and six. Oh, my God. We appreciate you. All right. I've got one minute. Okay, Jim and Bob. All right, tell me, tell me again, Jim is...
Jim Nelson is DA Davidson.
Okay.
And Kevin Marsnick is my old...
Kevin, Kevin, sorry, put down Bob. I have... Okay. You ready, Mrs. Anderson?
I'm ready.
See if I can get my stuff to work tonight. Yeah, I don't think the camera's gonna work again tonight.
Ha! It's not?
Nope.
So we aren't recording?
No, we are recording. I'm just not recording on my compu... Well, I'll record on my computer, they just can't see me.
Nobody's gonna see us.
Put a Band-Aid over your camera, that's what I do.
The light, the light's not even on. It's not even... All right, well, I guess we'll just get started.
I'm sorry, Kevin.
The cameras are a mess on this computer for some reason. Should I get that set all the way? All right, good evening, everybody. It's 7:01 PM on Monday, December 20th, 2021. If I can please get everyone to silence your computers that are online and those in the gallery to silence your cellphones and rise for the pledgably justice.
My pledgably allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Anderson, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Frederick?
Here.
Councilmember Rounds?
Here.
Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Holland?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Plaza?
Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Mr. Plaza is called out this evening.
Move to excuse?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Holland, seconded by Councilmember Rounds, so excuse Mr. Plaza. Mrs. Anderson?
Councilmember Frederick?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza... Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Plaza has been excused. This evening marks a special occasion for the city of Woodland and the departure of two of our current council members in your, your last official meeting of 2021. So we appreciate all that you've done for us. We've got some lovely words. I'd like to take a picture if everyone would like to step down real quick before I, before I make my comments. Because after, after the pictures, I mean, if we don't do pictures now, you may not allow me to. The pictures may not happen.
Will the pictures be?
It might have a swell black eye in one mouth.
I'm sure I can. Come on, Janice.
Like I said, Wednesday, looks like I want to.
I know, I know. So I'll make comments while you're standing here too, so come on in. We appreciate everything that you've provided to us. There are a number of ways that you can give back to your community and you chose, you chose us, so we appreciate that and all the service and the work that you have provided to citizens of Woodland. Mr. Frederick, another reason why I'm here is because of you. I think that, I think it was a chance encounter at a volleyball game discussing a water bill, which is still an ongoing issue that I have yet to be able to correct us. So I appreciate you and the guidance that you've provided, not only to myself, but also to our team. I think that we are so much better off for the work that you've done here, all the way down to Councilful Falls, into Corvus and this room, the professionalism that has been brought to our city just by you sitting here since 2008. It's a long time. I don't know what you're gonna do. All I know is that we'll be getting out of here sooner because the meetings won't go as long now, but... It's true. You bring such, so much value and not that you... People may say that you question authority. I don't think so. I think you're questioning the process and making sure that there is a separation of powers between the executive branch and the legislative branch. I think that you have done a tremendous job and I hope that moving forward, we can continue to do that and uphold the legacy that you've provided to us. So with that, I'm gonna present this to you. Benjamin Frederick, Woodland City Council, position number six, and appreciation and recognition, recognition of 14 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Woodland, 2008 to 2021. I don't think that we can't say thank you.
Wow.
So thank you very much. And Mrs. Graham, who's tired? Who's tired?
Mr. Broderick.
Oh. And then, and then there's Mrs. Graham, who, one of my favorite people in Woodland. I think that you, well, you tell the story the best, that we knew each other back in 2012.
Yes.
I did not know you, but you knew me.
That's right.
Which I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing when you talk about Mrs. Graham. You know, I made the comment this evening that you're Miss Woodland, but Jennifer Rainkeen, I know she's probably listening at home, said that you didn't have a crown, but I don't think that you need to have a crown to be Miss Woodland. You've done so much for our community already. Your entire family has provided service and you have just continued that legacy, so we appreciate you and we think that you're the most wonderful person in the entire world and I'm going to miss you.
I'm seeing that.
I'm seeing that. You torched me once, that I'll remember. On the, on the side of Davidson Street, if I remember right.
Um, yes. Yeah, there, there has been, it'll be 10 years now since I've known you.
Yeah.
And it'd be exactly 10 years in February, but it was at Jim's memorial service and once you see a uniform in a crowd of several, 1,500 people, that uniform always sticks out. And so it has carried on from there. Yes, I was out of town. And some things were going on here. I had only been back one day and I was walking down one side of the street and you were going down the other. And there again...
I think there was a fist that was thrown out.
Yeah.
Ew!
So from there on, and yes, it's been very heartwarming to get to know your family. And of course, the city's always meant a lot and it always will. It's always in my heart and, and it's a great place. And I'm very happy with the last 14 years. It was a challenge on my part whether I wanted to take it on or not.
I remember.
I was pretty quiet, yeah. There was another conversation that was had. There's been lots of conversations, believe me, over the last few years and it's just time and we will watch carefully at what will become starting for us in the year.
I have a feeling I'm not going anywhere. Anytime soon.
Because I've kind of gotten here and here into the DWR committee, so to continue on with that, so that's kind of the same stuff looking for the city, so it's been my pleasure. It's been a great community and so it's on a good spot and I appreciate all the staff and working for us. The love, love.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Joe, let's do a call here there.
I'm, I'm the brother of another brother, Brad, yeah. Well, we're going to miss you and look forward to seeing you in your, in your next role, whatever that may be, in the next few years, because I know you're not going anymore.
No, I'm not.
So I'm always in a phone call, but I know you're not going, so. Well, Janice Graham, Woodland Council, City Council, position number one, appreciation and recognition of four years of dedicated service to the citizens of Woodland, 2018 to 2021. Thank you very much. Mr. Frederick, do you have anything to say?
Well, I was gonna wait till reports of council, but since you asked.
So nothing, awesome, okay, moving on.
Well, you know, kind of just reflecting on my 14 years, I feel personally like I'm leaving the city of Woodland in a better place and I feel like I've had a little bit of my hand in that. And when I look back on that, I've had a lot of opportunity to work with various people with various backgrounds and various ways of coming to their opinions. And I've always appreciated the folks that disagreed with me the most because I could learn from them and see it from a different perspective because they may come with a perspective that somebody else in our community also has and that needs to be taken into consideration when we're making policy on behalf of the folks we represent. And nothing to me is more humbling than to be able to make decisions on behalf of the nearly 6,500 people that we represent on a day in, day out basis. I think that the city of Woodland has gotten so much better at the professionalism that our staff brings to the table. I couldn't be more proud of this team. I really feel good about the group that sits at this table. I feel after some, maybe a different administration where I would walk in with a high level of anxiety, I don't walk into these meetings with that anymore. I think our mayor has done a tremendous job of surrounding himself with phenomenal people that are doing the work every day. And as policymakers, it makes it a lot easier for us to be able to do our job. And I've always said that part of our job as members of the council are to be monitors of what the executive branch wants to do. That's our role. We provide oversight to make sure we are gonna be approving a budget today. That's our sole responsibility and we give that to the departments to, to work within the confines of, of that budget. So I've had a lot of fun. I've enjoyed mostly the people that, like I said earlier, that have disagreed with me and I've enjoyed that. And I've had people that have disagreed with me vehemently before and I found that to be really fun. And so I'll, I'll miss that, but I will always have a special, Woodland will always have a special place in my heart. I'm not sure if I'm, most likely I'm going to be leaving this community in the next year. I will not be far away, but Woodland has been awesome and I think Woodland's brightest days are ahead. We have a lot, a lot of good things going on and I just hope that we can get better, that we don't take steps backwards. And that's my whole goal is that we continue to move forward in a responsible, progressive, responsible, progressive way. Not to, you know, when we hear the term progressive, some people go, "Huh?" And that's what I'm trying to avoid. But there are some steps where we can take forward that make sense, that are good for the community of Woodland and I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss it, but on the same token, I'm gonna be extremely glad to be free.
Yeah.
Because it is a, this is not a two nights a month gig. It can turn a 20-minute shopping experience at Safeway into two hours if you're not careful. And so that I will not miss because I am a very private person. I do not like, I, I kind of just, here's the radar and here's where I'm at and that's kind of where I like to stay. Most people don't know that about me because I'm kind of vocal here, because I feel like that's my job. I was put in this role because this is the job that I'm required to do. I don't really, I'd rather be quiet, but I end, I end up having to come out of that shell here and that's been part of my development. This has helped my development professionally at my job to be able to be more vocal, to ask questions, to make sure we're making a good decision for our location when we're doing something. So with that, I thank staff, I thank the mayor, fabulous group. I'm gonna miss every single one of you and I'm sure I'll see you around town, but the Safeway trip's gonna be 30 minutes. That's my max. So thank you all.
We appreciate you. Thank you very much. Yeah, good luck with your... What is it they always say? If you don't anger everyone at least once you didn't do your job, I think you've achieved that.
Correct.
Including myself, I think, at one time or another. Well, thank you both for, for your service. We really do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Citizen communications for items not on the agenda. Mrs. Butler, would you like to step forward, please? Let us know what you're here to discuss and I'll provide you five minutes this evening.
Okay. I came this evening because I wanted to hear the things that I just heard and I would like to thank Benjamin Fredericks and Janice Graham for their service and I've been glad to hear what you've brought to the council and I just think you've done a great job, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Butler. Anyone else for items not on the agenda? Seeing no one, items on the agenda. Mrs. Butler, you're back. Welcome back.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that I understood what I was reading, that it is the desire of the council to be removed from the land use appeal process. Was that what I understood? It was the council's choice consensus?
I want to make sure that, are you here for the public hearing this evening on this topic?
Well, I will be here, but I just had that question. I just want to know that was, I mean, that'll maybe be covered when that comes out.
Gotcha. It is.
Yeah, okay.
To answer your question, yes, it is.
Great.
Do you want to speak during the public hearing?
No, I don't have any.
Oh, okay.
Yep, I just needed to know that.
Gotcha.
Now I don't, yeah, thank you.
You bet. Anyone else for items on the agenda? All right, seeing no one. The time has come for the agenda itself this evening.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Rounds, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Frederick?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
All right, the agenda has been approved. The time is now 7:17. We'll be going into a public hearing regarding ordinance number 1494, amending the Woodland municipal code to remove the city council from the land use appeal process. And at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Goddard before we take comment.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for, before you tonight. We did a workshop on this at our last meeting and I had mentioned that there were some code sections that I needed to chase down. At the work session, mostly what you had was the tables from 1908, so if you recognize this, which laid out who's responsible for making decisions in the appeal process. And in updating that since our last meeting, I identified, I think it was six code sections that referred to appeals by the council and I changed those code sections simply to refer to the table rather than inserting in code what's already on this table. So rather than duplicating different sections of the code, I referred to the table. But there was one significant change that I put in the last pair, the last sentence of the summary statement and that is, the reason why the council had asked me to do this is because of an appeal of a hearings examiner's decision and the hearings examiner in his decision laid out the legal reasons and the basis for the decision that he made. And the council's appeal responsibility didn't necessarily rely on a legal basis in code and that was what the concern of the council was, is that if, if you had reversed his decision or staff's decision, whether that was legally defensible. And when I was going through this, I realized that that's only half of the story, that the code also said that the responsibility for approval of subdivisions also lies with the planning commission and the city council. And it's the exact same situation where staff will review it if you have enough square footage, if the lot is wide enough, if you have frontage, you have road, road frontage, road improvements and the utilities, the subdivision meets the city code. The only reason for it to go to the city council would be for you to arbitrarily overrule what's in the code and use a non-legal basis for denying a subdivision. So it's the same situation, we're setting you up for the same legal jeopardy in approving subdivisions. And this might be a little overkill because you've only seen one subdivision in the four years I've been here, but it's still setting you up for the same legal conflict. And so this version of the ordinance includes not only the appeal responsibility going to the hearings examiner, who is a third-party impartial attorney who is qualified to make legal determinations whether staff is making a decision, but it also turns the plating over to the hearings examiner as well. So it removes you from not only the land use appeal process, but technically from the land use process that should lie in the executive branch of the city's government.
So I think, I think this goes back to the land use matter that we heard or the appeal that we heard of whether or not we're going to allow a certain thing in a certain area of the city. And from a policy standpoint, we all have a policy decision on that, but at the end of the day, the question that was being asked of us was a legal question of whether or not the hearings examiner followed the law. And, and I, it makes it very hard as a policymaker to separate, okay, I'm not acting as a policymaker now, I'm acting as Judge Wattner and I have to make sure that the question in front of me, did the individual, the hearings examiner in this case, violate the law? And if the answer's no, then no, he didn't. But meanwhile, you have people who are saying, "This is a horrible place for this. This should not be allowed." But we've already gone through that process and that's not the question that's before us. And I think it makes it very difficult for us as a body to be able, to be able to differentiate between the two of, okay, here's your policymaking hat that you can wear, but now you're not wearing that hat in this specific instance. And I think it makes it very confusing and very difficult for not only council members, but for citizens to, I agreed, I agreed with the appellate in this case. I didn't think it was a good area for this. That's not the question you're asking me. You're asking me whether or not the hearings examiner followed the law. And I believe, as did five or six members of this council, that yes, the hearings examiner did follow the law, so we have to allow it. But it puts us in a very awkward position and what this legislation does is it removes that awkwardness in my mind. Is that kind of with the gist of it?
Yes.
In a real life scenario?
Yes.
Beautiful.
Mrs. Rounds?
So if someone has a problem with the hearing examiner, then what is their second step?
So, so the way the process works actually under Washington state law, and I clarify that because our code is not as clear as Washington state law. So they would be able to show up to the hearings examiner and the hearings examiner would be able to make a determination as to whether or not there are any legal standards for him to address the issues that they want. And so they would be able to appeal to him directly and from there, it would go to court and a judge would determine whether any legal errors were made.
Because the way it is now, they can still go to, they appeal to the hearing examiner.
Yes.
But if it came to us, then if they still disagree.
Yes. The way it's written now, it goes from staff to the hearings examiner to you and then to court. So it adds a whole nother layer of bureaucracy without any kind of legal standing for defensibility.
Yeah, had we, had we agreed to that, I'm not sure we would have put Mr. Randolph in a position to defend the city in that case. I think we would have set him up for failure in essence. And I think that that's the tricky thing is separating out the policy versus the, now you're not acting as a policymaker. I kind of wish there was like a, maybe we're all in robes that night to distinguish the difference of who our responsibility is because I, I think the challenge is the folks that are appealing, like, how can you agree this? Well, we, we might agree with you, but that, that's not what we're hearing. And I think that, again, I think that that's really the mess. It puts us in an awkward position, I think.
All right, thank you, Mr. Goddard. Is there anyone in the gallery who failed to sign up to speak during this hearing? Seeing no one, is there anyone online that is in attendance to speak on ordinance number
We have a lot of people tonight.
Seeing no one, the time is now 7:25 and we are back in regular session and the public hearing is closed. Moving on to reports of city council. Mrs. Rounds?
I was just gonna say Rotary's been ringing the bell and you're still on for...
Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve.
11 to 1.
And we had, you know, people be set that couldn't ring the bell and we didn't get as many, but I announced today we were at 2,500, so we, we have done better than I thought we were gonna do with fewer people, so you're ringing the bell, Christmas Eve should really do some good.
11 to 1. Now, who brought in the most so far? You know how I accomplish, I hit myself every year. I like to win.
I picked up the bucket, let's see, somebody rang the bell one time Wednesday and then, or excuse me, Friday night and then Saturday. I don't know who all, we had one or two spots that wasn't covered Saturday, but that was the best bucket so far, so we'll see.
When you say best bucket, what does that mean?
$400.
Wow. Okay, well, I guess I have to write a check. I'll keep track as they start rolling their 401s over to you at least.
They want cash, they don't want your check.
So we'll see how you do.
Okay.
But anyway, so it's been busy with that and then we've been busy with getting gets together for all the kids in the community that needed a little extra help too.
And what about the food baskets? Are those all taken care of as well?
No, they will be handed out, well, I know they're Wednesday, I guess.
Wednesday, okay.
Yes, Wednesday.
Okay.
So I went into the grocery store this weekend just as Mr. Perry, former council member Scott Perry, was starting to ring the bell.
Yes.
I was in the grocery store long enough that I came out and the Keens were out there and I'm like, what happened to Scott? So I guess I was in the store too long.
But we usually try to only do it in two-hour increments, so.
Okay. God, was I really...
It goes back to your comments earlier.
It took a long time at the deli.
He might have been close to the end of his.
Okay, that's probably what I think. He might have been taking a break. Okay, good.
And you had to wait a long time in front of the deli.
The deli, you were there with me, it was a disaster. It took you forever to...
Oh, goodness. Small town, small town. Everybody wants what they want now.
Deficit.
Mrs. Graham?
Well, it's like Carol was saying, it was Saturday morning, we all went up and there was, what, seven?
there was, what, seven, eight vehicles, and everything got shoved in our cars, and we brought them down to the school so they could finish up getting the gifts ready for the Rotary Club.
100 kids.
Is that what it is? I knew it was over 100.
100 families.
So it's pretty impressive when you see what everybody goes through to collect, and who collects, and who helps, and so on and so forth. And it's a pretty impressive sight. Joy Klein kind of chairs all that, and it's a big job, but I know it's been simplified a little bit, so it makes it a little bit easier. So it's just a nice thing that the Rotary Club sponsors and does for the community. And I took my family out last night to see the Christmas lights, so it was a big thrill, and it's amazing what the community does to celebrate, and the work that goes into it, but the pleasure that it gives people to be able to take them out and see. I mean, my sister-in-law is just like a little two-year-old, you know, to go out and see the lights. So what the community does for that is pretty fantastic, so. And the LDS Church had a live nativity set up in their parking lot from 6:00 to 7:30 last night, so they were all dressed.
And to include a baby, Jesus. A live baby. It was not a doll.
And goats. So it was fun to get out and to do that, so anyway.
Thank you, Mrs. Graham. Any other reports to council? Mr. Chapman?
I was able to attend Shop With A Cop, it was a couple weeks ago, and it was very successful. I think Sergeant Keller and stuff and your crew down there did a great job, so they did a wonderful time and a good turnout with all the officers and stuff, and no mishaps on poles, so that was good. So it was all nice and wrapped up and taken care of and stuff, and I think Mr. Finn, you were there.
I was there.
And stuff, so it was a good turnout, you know, so I had to enjoy it, and everybody enjoyed it, and we were able to get shifts through and stuff, so.
Nice, thank you. Anyone else?
Me.
Oh, Mrs. Holland?
So Woodland Action Center is closed until after the New Year, so we are done doing distribution of food for the year. Last Saturday was the end, so all of our volunteers and staff can enjoy the holidays. And it happens that Christmas and New Year's fall on a Saturday, so that worked out well. Last Saturday, we served, I think, 130 families. The Promise Church and Woodland Action kind of partner every year with Fox 12 Toy Drive, and so The Promise from 3:00 to 6:00 was, they were distributing toys to kids in the community that maybe wouldn't necessarily get a present, so their parents get to come in and shop for them, and they kind of smuggle everything out in black bags, so they can get them home. But I think that's kind of it. Pretty soon, we'll have like the grand total numbers of how many families were served at the Action Center this year, so stay tuned. But that was, I just wanted to also thank Public Works, because when I was coming home Saturday night, and it was pouring rain, it was really pretty, all the lights driving down, what is that, Davidson? Yes, Davidson. It was super pretty, and I wish it wasn't raining so I could take a picture, but it was kind of nice to wrap up the year down there, and I was leaving with all the Christmas lights.
Love it. Anything else? All right, seeing none. Moving on to finance committee.
Yeah, we met this evening, except I wasn't there. I guess I opted out of my last finance committee meeting. I apologize. I believe I'm deferring to Mr. Monty Smith for the report.
So we met today at 5:30 in the police conference room. We discussed the sales tax report, and November had a sales tax of $250,300, which was a 33% increase compared to last month. We discussed revenue, went over voided check summary, and we voted to send the council with a due pass for our IT services, which should be on next month's agenda.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Smith? All right, seeing none. Human resources?
We met at 5:30 today. Mr. Plaza was absent, so I took some notes, but we talked about personnel for maybe the park, and we talked about the personnel policy for the holidays, and we also talked about Monday, they will be meeting with both Teamsters Unions to try to get, resolve those contracts, so, and that was about it. It was pretty quick and short.
Questions for, yes, Mr. Smith?
Not a question. I just wanted to follow up, that our next meeting will be February 22nd in the police conference room at 5:30.
No meeting in January?
No meeting in January.
Okay. Questions for Mrs. Rounds? All right. Mrs. Graham, Chamber of Commerce?
Our visitor center is still open seven days a week, 9 to 4. They've got some cute little things in there, so if you need the last-minute woodland or Washington doodads for the stockings, or friends, or whatever, please come visit us. And then our, well, let's see, I can't say that. We only, no, we only have two of our Tuesday meetings left, this coming Tuesday and the next Tuesday. And then, starting on January the 4th, there will be meeting changes for the chamber luncheons. We will be only meeting twice a month. Our first meeting of the month on the 4th will be a two-hour meeting starting at 11:30, and we have speakers coming from the city, the port, and the school district. And we will be meeting at the Antidote Tap, I guess, what do they classify themselves? Anyway, at Antidote, we're going to meet there, because they've got a meeting.
But they call that room upstairs something.
Yeah, they do.
I think it's called the Woodland Room.
Could be. Anyway, they have a nice area upstairs that we will be meeting in, and then you may go online to the chamber website, and please RSVP if you want lunch or not, if you're going to attend or not, so we have a head count, and then you can pay online for your lunch and/or not. Anyway, I haven't quite got it all together yet. And then on the 11th of January, the legislative calls will be starting, it is the Tuesday morning, they start at 7:30, from 7:30 to 8:00, and Representative Orkut will be our first person on the phone, so please join and listen to what he has to say. He usually is really good about giving us a rundown of what's coming up that we might be interested in for the city.
One of those starting the 18th, you said?
The 11th.
The 11th, I was saying the 11th, got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on January 29th will be the chamber annual banquet. Tickets for that will be on sale after the 1st of January. It is going to be held at Aline, and we have some nice, a couple big rooms in the back in their entertainment department, and they've been very nice working with us, and so on and so forth. More information about that will be out right after the 1st.
Is it the same program as before, where the chamber members come in and decorate the table?
Yes.
As before, so just different location, same program?
Yes, yes, it is. And it is that if businesses or whatever would like to advertise their business, we could give everybody a swag bag full of nice little things, so even if it's something you want, a candy bar that you want to put a sticker on if you don't have anything particular that you would like to offer for that service, we have ideas to help you with that, so just contact Ms. Miller at the chamber office, or at the visitor center where our office is at. And then if you would like to host a table, it just requires a centerpiece that way.
What time is that, Janice?
Usually, I think it starts at 5:00. So there's a social hour, and so on and so forth, and then the dinner, and then our program.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Graham.
I think that's it.
That's it? Okay.
I think so.
All right, moving on to myself, I've got a list of things to go over this evening. Mrs. Butler, what was your question? Did you have some clarifying, you said you had a question? Did you have a clarifying question about chamber stuff?
Oh, about visitors, they could make their, I mean, chamber members can, are to reserve a place and let them know about lunch, but what about visitors that would come to the meetings, like at the Antidote?
Oh, well, I think if you weren't going to have lunch, that's not a problem. I think more what they're looking for is a head count for the lunch service, because it will be a limited menu. And that will be just for the first meeting of the month. The second meeting, which should be on the 3rd Tuesday, that's just, no reservations have to be made for that, then you can just order off the menu for that one.
Thank you.
All right. I've got a number of things to go down this evening, so we'll talk about the next meeting, January 3rd. We'll be coming forward, Mrs. Graham is supporting us after this evening, so the chamber report, I've been in contact with Denise Miller, the executive director, and there will be a change in council rules coming forward to put her onto the second meeting of the month to give a report, which will be in between your two meetings, so she'll be able to talk about the meeting before and the meeting coming up. So you'll have that on the agenda, and then also, what else was going to be on that agenda? Council rules. Then started thinking about Mayor Protam, I think you've been on it for two years now? Mr. Smith? Okay. So unless you all want to nominate Mr. Smith at that meeting to continue on, started thinking about if that's a role that you'd like to take on or nominate someone to do. Let's see. Yeah, voluntold. I was also at the Shop With A Cop, great job to the police department for organizing that. I actually did two, this last Friday as well, I did one not as well organized as our woodland group, so it was nice to see all the folks there and the attendance and all the kids. I want to say 136, 137 kids were?
That was planned, we had about 128.
Okay, 128. So well done, and I know that that number was low, talking to the chief, that we've had upwards to 200 before. So great program, thank you for coordinating that. Also did some stocking stuffing with, at Local Home, which will be given out through Santa on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day night. 300 stockings or stuff, we had employees that were there. Ms. Coleman was there assisting as well. Again, we talked about competition, I'm pretty sure I won, just saying. I know that she tried to set up a full-on bowing assembly line on one side, and I was trying to do more than that assembly line, which I failed, so, but I was still a winner with myself. I believe someone commented I was competing with myself, and I was. So that was great, I love the community at Christmas time, and I will report that I did watch It's a Wonderful Life for the first time last night, very wonderful movie. I can see what Ms. Coleman is going for downtown, the look, it was very woodland with a lot of snow. So hopefully we'll get some snow and be able to still see those holiday decor, it was beautiful. I'll be bell ringing, as Mrs. Rounds said, from 11 to 1 on Christmas Eve. I am expecting to make more than $400, so if you're listening, please come on down. It's for the kids, to send them to camp in the summer, and camp will be going on this summer.
Well, we hope so.
We hope so, okay, good. I'm glad that folks are coming out and still donating, so that's good. And thank you to our local Safeway for all the money that they're raising. They're almost at, when it comes to, I think they're called Turkey Bucks?
We have Turkey Bucks Thanksgiving, and Santa Bucks is Christmas.
Santa Bucks, okay. So I noticed the, when I was in there this evening, the, what is that meter thing they call that they fill in?
Thermometer.
What is it?
Thermometer.
Thermometer, thank you. I have a lot going on up here, I don't know what it is. The thermometer, it's almost, like, it's almost at their explosion part, so everyone here is doing well, and every time I go in there, Cody Arnold says, "Make sure you leave your $5," which I do. Because exactly, you go into the grocery store, everybody sees you, and yeah, well, you're the mayor, you make a lot of money, so give us more.
I have to go through the checkout, because I get a little embarrassed when they ring the bell on you.
Yeah. Ding 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 ding, thank you. Oh, was that Mr. Fredericks? I thought that was a Grinch. I thought he was a Grinch.
You know what they say, every time the bell rings.
Oh!
I went full circle there.
Oh, yeah, we did. Well done, Mrs. Rounds, well done. On your agenda this evening, there's a few items. First of all, in consent items, I think it's in, was it in consent items?
No.
No, it's not, sorry. Where is the appointment?
Actually, it's under the mayor's.
Oh, it's under my report, oh. Oh, got you. Is that just a motion, or is it in the, is it on here?
It's a motion.
So we just ask for a motion.
Okay.
So if they see fit.
All right. When we get into the meat of the meeting here, asking for an appointment to the CW COG, the Kalasakaiakam Council of Governments, with me being the primary until we go back into in-person meetings, with everything that's going on with Exit 21 and transportation and everything, I think I'd like to attend and be a little bit more engaged with that.
That'd be a good thing.
And then also, Mr. Boyce being the alternative, when I'm unable to make those meetings, but I plan on attending and engaging with them, especially considering they've given us $600,000 for that project, I'd like to make sure that we're doing everything we can to secure more funding. So I'll ask for a motion for that when you see fit, if possible. Also this evening, you've got, the final budget is on your pack, I've got some notes here, so as Mrs. Rounds stated during the HR committee, I asked that Mr. Boyce add a $12,395 allocation for an assistant for Scott Hill Park, and I can explain or take questions on that. It is a 12-month contract, non-represented, no benefits, it's a 12-month deal. After further discussions and the presentations from Rotary, we, on our side of the table, executive branch, believe that we need turf fields, and we know that they can be very expensive. So we want to partner, we've already invested over half a million dollars in the property, and I would like council to assist in partnering just a little bit further. This person's duties will be dedicated to going out and securing funding for those fields to ensure that that park is a successful project at the end, as we discuss internally. We just, we know it's going to be a successful project, we just know it can be even better with turf fields. So it is in your budget this evening, we're asking that you approve that as well. Again, the budget is still balanced. Speaking of reserves, and Mr. Boyce, if you have questions, do you want me to talk about that, or you want to talk about them?
Feel free.
Okay. Speaking of reserves, it was brought up at the last meeting, wanting to know where we were with our emergency funds. We have a five-month reserve at this point, which is beyond the council policy of three months, so we're doing pretty well. However, I say that, and Mr. Boyce explains it a little bit more eloquently than I do, but there is a flow that comes with that, so because we're at five months right now doesn't mean we'll be at five months next year during the budget process. Some of that, the money that is in there is from the federal private dollars that have come in, which has boosted that number up as well. We're still healthy even pulling those numbers out, so we're still doing pretty well. Mrs. Rounds?
This has been mentioned before, but Vince, we're not, we're going to be not reliant on our...
Sales tax.
Yes.
Property tax.
We might want to make it a five-month rather than just three months to kind of cover us in that case.
Yes, and that's part of the conversation that Mr. Boyce and I had this evening was what, or even today, he brought that up, and I think that's something that we'll discuss at our next retreat, which is another thing that is on my list of please looking at dates in early February. I know that you do a lot of traveling that month, so early February, it'll be on a Saturday, but start, that's the other thing that will be discussed at the January 3rd meeting with the two new council members as well. But that is something that is up for discussion since...
We're just having a retreat.
What's that? What's that?
We're actually having a retreat next year.
Yeah. Yeah. No, we have to. Yes. We've got too much going on.
We've tried to, yeah.
I know. So that, but that is something that is on the docket to discuss, and Mr. Boyce agrees with that, that we, that should be adjusted due to the fact that we're relying so much on sales tax.
I think we originally, in the policy, we put three so we could hit three. But the understanding was is it really should be six months
Okay.
Of that. And I'm pretty sure six months is kind of like the standard.
Well, it fluctuates, but
Is it a year?
It would be a good...
Is it 12 months?
No, no.
What, what is the standard?
Well, there isn't one standard. It depends where you live. But, you know, six months is a very good place for us to, if we can attain that.
I think we wanted to, let's hit three months. The system was three.
Extend it from there.
So we can say, hey, we're hitting policy. Then let's change the goalpost a little bit up to six. But I think that's been the desire.
Right.
Policy's three?
Yes.
That's right. Okay.
So we've done a good job. We, on your way out the door, you did it. Well done. I guess I know it's, it's been a struggle since, I mean, we, we were so close for so long and we finally got there. But as Mr. Boyce said, there's some analysis that needs to be done as well to look back because we are relying on sales tax. We're going to go back to some of our hard-hit years to see exactly where, what we expended, you know, to see exactly if that is enough, if six months is enough. So more to come on that, and that will be a discussion, a topic of discussion. What else am I missing here? Oh, that's the budget. Minol contract, we do have folks on for Minol this evening. If you do have questions on that, that Minol contract is for, to go to utility monthly billing. And then also, which I fully support. And the Humane Society contract is on there, which is always a wonderful topic of conversation. That has increased by about 5%. Obviously, the Humane Society's not here this evening, but they have a new director, and we've got them on board for February to come before council to provide information on what exactly they are providing. And...
Do we want to approve the contract before they come and talk to us?
That's something that's
Will we talk about?
That's up for discussion.
Okay.
I guess, when you, when you get to it.
Okay.
I would hope we do because we'd have an interim period in there where services aren't being provided, so...
And we're, that would put us into probably March if it's not approved.
Okay.
Before we would have service again. And then also, we have, I'm sorry.
Just to clarify.
Fire, where are we?
Nothing prevents the council from passing an interim three-month contract through March that gets us through March until we have this director here, which I think we've been through three of them, to really tell us what exactly they're doing.
Really?
What the counts are, where they're at. And I know we'll talk about that when we get to it.
Okay.
But, yeah, it should be something that, we need to, tell us your story. But we need it. We might need it. Two cents.
Also, action item H this evening, ordinance number 1496, which is the bond ordinance to finance acquisition of 236 Davidson Avenue. We also have Mr. Nelson on the line if there are questions for DA Davidson, who is supplying those, not funding.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Also, Mark Greeno, our bond counsel, is also on the...
Oh, okay. Perfect. So we have a few folks if there's questions. Mr. Boyce?
Okay. I also wanted to mention ordinance 1497, the personnel policy. So as you know, the mayor is wanting to alter the holiday schedule. For instance, we're in negotiations with Teamsters right now. They're talking about the new Juneteenth holiday. What the mayor is proposing for the personnel policy, and the only change that's really in this before you, is eliminating Christmas Eve as a holiday, changing that to a floating holiday with department head approval. We talked about it with the HR Committee tonight, and it was brought up too, that for a while, we may have different sets of holidays for different employees. So immediately, it would go into effect for exempt employees. However, the bargaining units all have a list of holidays. We're in negotiations with both Teamsters units right now. So we'll be trying to match what's in the personnel policy. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. So we could end up in a situation if we don't change the holidays where the offices or city halls closed on Christmas Eve. Department heads would still have to report to work or take accrued time off. So anyway, it's, gives us some, something to shoot for, something to point to towards in negotiations as to what the council will is. Excuse me. I also wanted to mention there's a code enforcement appeal hearing for 20 after four that is scheduled in this room, January 4th at 1:00 PM. So if anyone's interested, they can attend. Also, planning commission meets January 20th, 7:00 PM. And, well, I believe that's all I have tonight, so...
Questions for Mr. Boyce?
The appeal hearing is January 4th, 1:00 PM in this room.
Will that be in-person and online or just online? Or both? Both? Okay. Perfect. Where can they find the link for that?
It's already on the website.
On the, on our website?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, thank you. Seeing no questions from Mr. Boyce. We've come to consent items.
Make a motion to approve the consent items. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Rounds, second by Councilmember Fredericks. Mrs. Anderson?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Consent items have been approved. We've come down to action items. We have a number. Does council need a break at this time?
I'm sorry.
All right. Okay. As I say, you did have three apple juices.
I did.
Consent item D, adopt ordinance number 1494, amending the woodland municipal code to remove the city council from the land use appeal process.
Move adoption of ordinance number 1494.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Fredericks?
I think I've already spoken as to why I think this is a good idea for policymakers to remove themselves from the judicial process. It's hard to wear two hats when you're a policymaker. And in this case, acting as Judge Wapner, it makes it hard. So I think it, in this case, I think it makes sense to move forward with this. And I think this puts the city in a much better position.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yeah, I agree. We needed to clean this up and get to remove council from the, this is more of a legislation that is a policies that we're making and stuff, so...
Further discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item D, ordinance number 1494. And before we do that, is this a first or a first reading? This is a first reading?
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Action item D has passed. Moving on to action item E, adopt ordinance number 1495, 2022, final budget, final reading.
Make a motion to approve adoption, adopt ordinance number 1495, 2022, final budget, final reading. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Rounds, second by Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Rounds?
We just need to get it approved.
Councilmember Smith?
No comment.
Further discussion? Mr. Fredericks?
So presuming that action item, hold on a second. H passes. What is the monthly payment on that? Does it come out monthly? Where does that hit the budget? And what is the expense associated with it? Because...
So I'll refer you to...
Mr. Nelson?
Mr. Nelson or Mr. Greeno? I believe Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Nelson, did you hear the question?
Yeah, time is down. Okay. We wondering what the monthly payment is to fund $400,000 for the building purchase?
Correct. Is it a monthly or is it an annual payment? How does, how does that work?
Annual payment, payments are on June 1st and December 1st. Annual payments approximately $38,000 a year, 15 years. We're going to rerun the numbers. We just got a new interest rate from the selected bank, which is Zion's Commerce Bank. And that interest rate is 2.09%. The bank loan to fund $400,000 over 15 years would be prepayable at any time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And then, Mr. Boyce, the second part of that question?
So because we didn't know the payment and the rate, it's not in the budget yet. So after the second reading, if it's approved by council, we'll be asking for a budget amendment at the same time. We will most likely set up a debt service fund. And the proceed, because we're using the building for public, public works purposes, the funding for that, we'll have to budget transfers out of those different public works funds.
Annual payment is 38 is what I heard, correct?
Yes.
38K? Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mrs. Holland?
Is there a reason you don't just buy things without making payments? Like, is there a reason why you don't just drop 400K on a building that you're wanting to acquire, but make payments over 15 years?
Right. So, so part of the reasoning is because we have our capital improvement plans for both water and sewer. Especially water right now, it's, more of the projects are front-loaded than the sewer plant. The rates are extremely, the interest rates are extremely cheap right now. So it's making sense to us right now to finance, pay the low rates, and still continue on with the other projects that we have in the capital improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Holland, I think that's a very valuable question to ask because we're not going to see 2.09% interest in another 10 years.
Right.
It'll probably be 12% or 13 or 14% given the fact that we're printing so much money, the whole inflation thing. But at that point, it'd probably make more sense to pay cash.
And there's no prepayment penalty on it.
Yep.
That's a good thing.
Okay. Further discussion? All right, seeing none. Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item E, adopt ordinance number 1495, 2022, final budget, final reading.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
All right. Action item E has passed. Moving on to public works, Minol contract. This is for monthly utility billing.
Move to approve the Minol contract.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks, second by Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Fredericks?
I think this is a good thing. I, the only thing that I would suggest is that we continue to keep the dates loose of May-June for full implementation. I think this is one thing we need to make sure it's done right to avoid any public outcry, I guess you could say. So I think it's important that we have all of our ducks in a row before we just go charging forward to try to eliminate as many bumps in the road as we can. That would be my only thing is no hard, my hope is that if it changes, the staff would come before council and say, hey, we need to delay this further. There's nothing wrong with that. As long as, I guess, what I would like to see as a citizen is that you're making progress.
Councilmember Rounds?
I agree.
Councilmember Smith?
I'm personally not a fan of outsourcing anything. I think our city does a good job. And I would like to stick with the current setup and stick with bi-monthly billing to keep our costs down.
Mrs. Holland?
So, Mr. Boyce, what is the, how much is this different than what is currently being spent on performing the task of billing utilities?
Yeah. So there is an initial implementation fee, two payments of, I believe, $13,000 in the first year that doesn't continue on in subsequent years. It is fairly close to what it would be if we hired, if we were going to stay in-house and implement monthly billing, we would have to hire an additional staff person to make that happen. It's, once you get past the transition period with those one-time fees, it's competitive with that. Plus, it could have the additional benefit, well, what we're hoping for is a number of the utility questions will be fielded by Minol. And that will free up staff time for other, other, other items that need attention. So we believe it's, and I should note also that Ms. Coleman actually helped reduce the fee from what you saw, you know, months ago when we initially talked about it. So, yeah, it's, it's, if you want to go to monthly billing, this is a good option. Either way, if it's internal or external, it's, it's going to be an additional cost to see.
And then my other question, nobody's getting fired to be outsourced to Minol?
Correct. So
Okay.
Utility billing clerk, right now we have one utility billing clerk. We have indicated that we will retain that person. We're still discussing internally about what the final job duties will be. But there's plenty of work to go around. So no one would be displaced.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none. Mrs. Anderson, will you please take the roll for action item F, Minol contract?
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Action item F has passed with five to one. Moving on to action item G, Resolution 744, amending Resolution 715, general fees and charges.
Move adoption of Resolution number 744.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks, second by Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Fredericks?
I'll defer to Mr. Goddard.
Oh, Mr. Goddard.
I apologize to interrupt you, but I would like to point out that there was an addition, a late addition to the agenda this afternoon, a, an additional draft version of this resolution. We noticed a couple issues from the one that went out Friday.
Sorry, I forgot to bring this up.
The golf cart ordinance...
Your last meeting with your nemesis has reappeared itself.
Full circle on that.
Yeah, we did.
There, there is an ability for golf cart owners to register their golf carts for use on the city streets under certain circumstances. But it has to be registered with the city and it has to meet certain safety standards. And that registration fee is $40 according to the application form. But that is not reflected in our fee resolution. So it was added, should you decide to include the golf cart registration fee. Otherwise, we would not be able to collect any fees for the registration of golf courts or golf carts. And then there was also one other thing I needed to point out, and that is our new supercharged clerks at the front counter. They went through the effort of reformatting the fee schedule. So it used to be just kind of one giant list of fees. And they broke it down into different headings. So there's dark headings and then some gray headings to kind of compartmentalize it, to make things easier to find. And in going through that, the managers noticed, well, you know, this isn't really here, it's here. And so they kind of shuffled some of those fees. And there are And there are some minor adjustments. So, it's not going to be in the exact same location from Friday's version versus the final version that was posted online this afternoon. Um, and the fee numbers that changed were specifically in the building section. We had, um, we added a deposit required for building permit review. Currently, what happens is an application is submitted, we'll do the work to process the permit, and then, when the building permit is ready to issue, that's when the contractor will pay for their building permit. Very rarely, you will come across someone who has us process the permit, and then they decide not to build, at which time, the building department has spent a significant amount of money processing a permit, but since that permit is never purchased, we never get reimbursed for those. So, we added a deposit table, meaning that they need to pay for that plan review upfront, so that if they decide not to build, they've paid us for the work that we've already done. It means we're front-loading those fees, it's not an additional fee, it just means they're paying us to do the service that we perform for them, rather than paying us after the service is provided. So it's not actually an increase, it's just changing the timing of when that fee comes in. And then, the last fee was, there's an increase in the building permit base fee. We were asked by our consultants, who indicated that this year, they were going to increase their billing rates for the first time in four years, and they pointed out that we are charging significantly lower fees than the city of Kalama, which is a smaller sister city. And so, we compared those two numbers, and we are significantly charging less for our building permits. So we increased an amount, it's about 10 percent on the base fee. So it's not a significant amount, but it gets us, um, it closes the gap with what Kalama is charging. So, we didn't look at Clark County, we're not trying to be like Clark County, we're looking at Kalama, who's probably a better comparable for the Cowlets County market that we're in. So, there is an increase that wasn't in the previous version that you viewed, and I can get you more details if you, um, are interested in that, you can call me at my office.
Mr. Fredericks?
This seems kinda rushed. Um, and so my question to you is, is there, is there any reason why this can't be delayed one week, so we can have, uh, folks that maybe printed the agenda on a Thursday or Friday, not like we have a bunch of folks that showed up this evening, but if they wanted to come and talk about that, I just, is there a reason, if by delaying it one week, that this would be an issue?
No, that, that's why we specifically added an additional version to online, so that if you decide to take action on what you had, on, published on Friday, it's, the packet is already online. And if you're inclined to take a look at the late changes.
Did you say any fees in Kalama that were lower, and then, did you adjust those lower? Or did you just take the high for both?
I did not. We only looked at the building permit. And the reason why we did is because we don't use their zoning processes, or their police process, or their public works processes, but the building process is exactly the same.
When you say it was, you added 10 percent to the base rate, can you give, 10 percent seems like a very small number, uh, but sometimes when you use a percentage, the number's larger, uh, when you actually look at the dollar amount. What is the dollar amount on a base rate?
So, um... So, the way, the way building permit fees are calculated is based upon the valuation of the structure. So for every thousand dollars of valuation, you might add...
So a $200,000 home, as an example, that's something, I don't know if it, $200,000 homes...
Probably more like 350, 400 right now.
You're saying the value of the home, you're not talking about the land that goes with it, correct?
That's correct. The value of the structure.
The value of the structure, so in this case, a reasonable...
250.
Two hundred, 250. On a $250,000 home, what would the base rate be today? What would be the base rating with the additional 10 percent?
So, for between $100,000 and $500,000 worth of construction, uh, the old base fee was about $1,142, and the new base fee would be $1,228. So it's about $60.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I have a question.
Mrs. Holland?
Photocopies. Who came up with these? Who came, is that just what they've been, 15 cents, which would assume you pay eight cents for a color copy from your...
That's just what they've been, we haven't raised the...
Yeah. So, if I remember correctly, that's Office, whatever they're called, the predatory photocopier company. They usually charge eight cents per color copy, plus the cost of paper, and you're charging 15 cents, so it doesn't take into account somebody's time to do it.
Are you talking about public disclosure requests?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause that's 15 cents a thing, I mean, I'm just saying, y'all should be charging more, because that's not taking...
I need to, uh, check that out also, because I think there's some state statute that talks about what we're able to charge. Um, so I'd need to see if, what, if any flexibility there is there.
You can only charge what it costs us.
Most of these requests that we're getting, we're not doing printing. I would assume they're going on a digital copy for the whole part.
Right, because it's darn near free.
Yeah.
When you go digital, yeah.
But if it's not, and somebody's asking you to schlep it down to 100 Davidson and start rustling around some dusty files, and then haul it back over and photocopy it, there's a cost associated with that. That's the thing that kinda just grinds my gears, is that people don't take into account that there's a cost involved with petty shenanigans, and you're, we pay staff to participate in somebody's petty shenanigans by sending them on wild goose chases for things that take up half a day and don't necessarily account to anything, right? And I feel like our city staff members probably have a whole lot better things to worry about during a day than that. I'm just, I'm just saying. I mean, just wanna throw that out there, but the photo, I know, I'm, and again, I'm, I wanted to thank you for printing the agendas in black and white, cause those are part of your contract, and they're free.
Mr. Boyce?
So, Mr. Randolph just pointed out to me, showed me the statute where it is, 15 cents.
And that's ridiculous, so who do I need to ask in Olympia to change that?
The state legislature.
Is it, is it RCW or is it a WAC?
Good luck with that.
RCW. RCW. Okay. Yeah. You're gonna have to get them all on board for that one. All right, sorry.
Well, I know some people, so I can start asking, so...
So can you make a motion?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, postpone Resolution Number 744 until the January 3rd, 2022, City Council meeting.
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks to postpone Action Item H, Ordinance Number 1496 to January 3rd, and seconded by Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Fredericks?
This, for me, is more of a process thing, I wanna make sure we get a clean document in front of the folks, uh, so they can go through it, see that we're adjusting them depending on the time when they printed the agenda, things are changing up until this afternoon. I think it would be prudent just to wait, if not an urgent item, have them be able to have the opportunity to be able to look at it, be able to come to speak to us if there's a concern, uh, send us an email, and then council can act on it at the first meeting in January.
Councilmember Rounds?
Agreed.
Further discussion?
And then you can't blame me for wait raising fees that way.
On your way out the door. Well done, sir. Well done.
I don't have, I don't see why we would need to wait. It's what it is. I mean, it costs money to do things, and it looks like they put a lot of effort into figuring out how much things should cost, except for what the state won't let you charge accordingly. But, um, yeah, things cost money, people know that. I don't have a problem passing it tonight.
All right. Seeing no one else. Uh, Mrs. Anderson, please take the role on postponement of Action Item H, 1496 to January 3rd.
No, crush.
Oh, oh, sorry, stand by. Sorry, I apologize.
Item G, Resolution 744.
Resolution 744, amending Resolution 715, postponement to January 3rd.
Motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
No.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
All right. The motion has passed and is, will be postponed to January 3rd with a five to one vote. Moving on to Action Item H, Ordinance Number 1496, Bond Ordinance to Finance Acquisition of 236's Davidson, First Reading.
Move to adopt ordinance number 1496, First Reading.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks, seconded by Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Fredericks?
Uh, I have a question. What is the city's remaining bond capacity after this?
That is... I don't have it at my fingertips, but I'll follow up with you. It's, the city has sufficient, uh, debt capacity on a going basis.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Excellent. Um, I, I am supportive of this because it keeps City Hall downtown, and I think that that's where it needs to stay. Um, so, I'm supportive of moving forward with this. Um, again, my only concern is ensuring that we have sufficient bonding capacity if there's something that we need to do in the future. It sounds like we do, and I'm pretty sure we do. Yep, Mr. Boyce is acknowledging that, so I'm supportive of moving forward with this. I think it's a good thing for the city. Um, and I appreciate the outside-the-box thinking of our administration on this, because this is an outside-the-box, uh, kinda deal. Uh, I think it makes total sense, and, uh, I'm glad it was, we were able to pull that together. So thank you to the mayor and the executive staff for going over this, cause I think it's a really good deal.
Thank you. Mrs. Rounds?
Well, it might've been gone over at the last meeting, which I was not able to be here. But did it, did the appraisal come in?
Um, I think we, have we done, have we gotten their first pass?
Yeah, so, so an appraisal isn't required when bonding, however, we can do one if City Council would like. I know we've talked about doing appraisals before.
I, I thought we talked about purchasing, and if it came in at the appraised value, so did we decide not to do that at all?
Well, it, it's not a requirement, we can, uh, spend the money and do that if City Council would like us to.
Uh, Mr. Smith?
So, are we going to pass this without getting the appraisal done, or we can, need to make a motion to get the appraisal done? I guess that's the question I have right now.
We have a motion.
Well, I was with the understanding that we were gonna get an appraisal done and not pay him over the appraisal, but that was my assumption that I thought we had talked about.
You're, you're right, we have talked about that. Initially, we were thinking that was going to be a requirement. Uh, but like I said, if City Council wants an appraisal, we can go out and go.
Well, do we think that it's within the correct price range? That would be the only reason why we would or would not get an appraisal.
Right. And I might look at public works...
Ms. Coleman?
I, I believe it's within the price range, I can't tell you exactly, it might be off $25,000, what's worse. But what I will share, what I will share is that we can't buy, we cannot expand City Hall for this lease amount of money. There's, I mean, you can't even buy property, let alone break ground over $25,000. So, I'm, I, it's not perfect. I, I believe, based on my experience, that I think it's a fair price, um, but I think that if council wants an appraisal, I think we should get an appraisal. I mean, we have a snipe contract. If, if you feel comfortable with that, we did talk about that, we absolutely did talk about that in the, in the executive session. So if you guys want one, we can order one. But that, I mean...
I'm not against it being downtown, I mean, I love the idea that it's gonna be downtown, but I just, I wanna make sure that we're prudent with spending our money and making sure that it comes in at, I don't know, I just, I just thought that was the process that we were gonna go through, but...
I, I will state that it was, it was listed, that was brought, is, it was listed for $499, we did not sell for $499, but they did come down to $425, so $75 going for the listed price.
Pleasure. Mr. Smith?
I agree, um, getting the appraisal would be nice, but I also understand that there is not another opportunity to get a building next to City Hall and have it be downtown. Um, so I, I, part of me says, yes, get the appraisal, but the other part of me says that it's not, it doesn't seem overvalued by, uh, the discussions we've had. So, I can overlook the appraisal, um, because you're not gonna have another opportunity. If that building goes away, we're not gonna get another opportunity in the near future to combine City Hall with a building right next to it. So, even if we do end up paying a little bit more, I think it might be worth it.
Can I just say something?
Mrs. Holland?
So, I think we all know that it's a seller's market around here, so people can ask pretty much anything they want. And I kinda think some people are on the pipe when they list things for what they list them for, but, um, I am hoping that this opportunity puts to bed the idea of a multimillion-dollar city, yeah, City Hall somewhere. Though I think hopes and dreams are awesome, I just don't want it to be on the backs of Woodlanders. Um, so I think, in the grand scheme of things, this is the best option, and City Hall's been downtown for how long now? How long has it been in that building?
1998.
Yeah, but it's been downtown since...
Oh, yeah, right, it's been downtown.
Right, but in that, in, in the old...
Our temporary, in our temporary spot?
Yeah.
1990 simple.
Yeah, the temporary spot for 20 years, or whatever. So, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, I think this is the perfect opportunity to bust down a wall and, and expand, and then maybe someday, the property on the other side of the buil, wall will be up for sale. We never know. So, but yeah, thanks. Thanks for all your hard work on this, you guys all did an amazing job. I know some people are gonna be excited to, you know, not be elbow-to-elbow with their neighbors, so...
Anything further?
Ben, what's your thoughts?
I agree with Mr. Smith. Uh, I just feel like, uh, yeah, appraisal would be good, but you also run the risk when you run the appraisal that it comes in higher than the number that we've got, and then what? And then maybe the, maybe they go, "Well, wait a minute." I don't, not sure if we have to, uh, at that point, when we get an appraisal, that is a public record, I'm assuming correctly, that can be discovered. So, I really think it's a good spot. I feel like it's a good solution, given the alternative of, you know, we've had things that have brought, been brought to us before, which were great ideas, but they were very costly.
Right.
And I think that this is much more, um, fiscally responsible to do, and it keeps it in downtown where it's, where it should be, so...
A hundred percent.
Yeah. And so, from my perspective, I think it's a, I think it's a good deal, given the environment of where we're at, and given the interest rate at a very low, uh, percentage, and given that this, this creates a long-term solution that is, will actually fix the five-year solution that turned into a 25-year, um, issue for us. So, I think it's reasonable, I don't think it's out of, out of line with reality. Um, I know the, in the past, we've looked at, uh, the Centennial Building with as much work that needs to be in that, and I remember that Appian was a million dollars or something like, it was very expensive for the amount of work that would've had to have gone into it. I really think that this is just... I really think that this is just, I think it's good for the city, I do, I think it's a good financial, long-term decision that solves our, solves our issue with space. We got a space issue, and I think this solves it, and it keeps us where we want to be.
Okay. Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item H, ordinance number 1496, bond ordinance to finance acquisition of 236 Davidson Avenue, first reading.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Action item H has passed, moving on to action item I, Humane Society Contract.
I make a motion to extend the contract for three months until they come and make a presentation, so we can find out exactly what they're doing for us.
May I ask a point of clarification on the motion that's been made?
Yes.
Does that include the 5% increase, or without the 5% increase?
I would say without. Is that possible?
Well, there are two parties to an agreement, so we, uh, need to get the Humane Society to sign off on that.
So, I will second the motion for discussion, so we can actually discuss it.
Okay.
Councilmember Rounds?
I'd, I, I don't mind extending the contract so we're not without service, but I'd like to know exactly what they are doing for us, that they think they wanna add 5% more to what they're doing for us, so, that's my feeling.
Councilmember Fredericks?
I've just been requesting these folks to come see us for probably five years now, um, and I don't know why they can't seem to get here. I, I know they've gone through people lately, um, it seems to be a dysfunctional organization at best, uh, from my, my perception. So, yeah, I, I agree, I, I really don't feel like, I have no idea what they're doing, and I know our police department does, um, uh, because they're the ones that have to deal with it on a day-in, day-out basis. So, there is a need to have somebody do the work, uh, but I'd like to know and be able to speak to someone in a safe way, who brings it to my attention, what they do, because I couldn't tell you, I, I don't know, other than, um, I, I think it is not a, and, and I actually kinda like this, by the way. I think it's a, when they, when we need them, they come. And I don't really like them going on doors, well, we hear your dogs barking out in the back, and we wanna make sure they're licensed, so we leave a notice on your door. That, to me, is annoying. But I understand, so I get it, but I'd like to know what they're doing, the number of calls, you know, if they picked up 10 dogs in the last year, we'll do the math. You know, that's 1,500 dollars a dog. I, I don't know, I, I honestly don't know what they do, but I'd like to have them come here and tell us the story, and give us some data to back up, um, the expense. Because we would be doing that in our own personal house if we were paying 15,000 dollars a year for something. We would want some data to back up, are we gonna continue to do this? Are we gonna continue paying 250 dollars a month for cable, are you watching it? Do we really need that? I mean, those types of things, if we're, we're making that, that would be a concern for us in our own home, I think it's something we oughta look at for the city.
I used to be under the understanding that we had an ordinance in the city of Woodland that you couldn't let your dogs run loose, but I heard here a while back that we do not have that ordinance, is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that question, I know...
Mr. Gard?
I just swore that we heard that.
I believe Sergeant Keller is here, and I believe he has indicated that we do have that.
There is ordinance on books.
On the books.
There is an ordinance, well, I just swore that I heard here at one of these meetings that there was not, because I was always with the assumption. Did, am I right, Dennis? Yes?
I think it had to do with Horseshoe Lake Park and dogs on a leash.
No.
So, indifferent?
This was something about the neighborhood, whoever left your dog loose and crap to the neighbor's yard and...
Oh, yeah, that was...
A while back, and it was discovered that there was not a leash law.
Yes, not a leash law.
Yeah. Something of that nature, whatever.
So, what do they, what do they do if there's not a leash law, except for in a complaint?
I, I, I mean, I know I have been involved with a dangerous dog, uh, instance in Woodland. Uh, basically, a dog was out and was being overly aggressive, and I, you know, worked with them, so I know they have a presence here. That was probably a year or so ago, um, but, but I know, I worked with them on that, so, yeah.
That still doesn't tell me, do we actually have a leash law in Woodland, or do we not?
No, I don't know.
Mr. Gard, are you looking right now?
I don't know.
Okay.
Would the municipal code, we got a book?
I, I do not believe we have a leash law in Woodland right now.
We don't?
I'm 99% sure we do not.
I just swear, that's what I heard here at, at the council chambers, that there was not one, and I always assumed that there was. Because unless a mean dog creates a problem, then any dogs can run loose.
My, my recollection was similar to the mayor's, that we were talking about Horseshoe Lake Park, and that there wasn't a requirement that it be on the leash, but it have to be under...
No, I, we weren't talking about Horseshoe Lake Park.
So, we were gonna put up signs at one point, that we might have two different, but that there was...
It's gotta be two different things, because I don't remember anything about Horseshoe Lake Park, so...
Mrs. Holland, are you doing research?
Um, I will look, I usually could find it really quick on my laptop, because I always have that, like, keyed up, because I'm inured, but, um... One of the questions I, or one of the comments I did wanna make, though, is that, um, Council requires, uh, Woodland Action to give an accounting of where document recording fees go, every year, or every quarter. And Woodland Action has to give an accounting to several agencies in Clark and Cowlets County of who and how they serve people in those counties. So, it is not outside the, the realm of possibility that the Humane Society should also have to give an accounting to the city of Woodland at quarterly or once a year of how that 15,000 dollars was utilized. I mean, we pay, I too would like to know, how many dogs do they pick up? I mean...
We, we do get quarterly reports from them, uh, that discuss the number of animals, interventions they have.
In this packet?
There's not a lot of detail to it, but, uh, we can pass that on.
Yeah, it would be, it would be helpful when we're discussing whether or not to approve a, what, another contract, so, you know. I don't have a problem with the 5% increase, because literally every single agency is asking for somewhat of a percentage of an increase, 5 to 7. We, in our Finance Committee meeting, the people who do the IT want 7% increase. So, it's kind of that time of year where everybody's gonna ask for more. Because they can.
Can we defer to Sergeant Keller, he has the number for where you might be able to find it?
Yep. Sergeant Keller?
Venus Code 704, Doc 050. Right, it says basically if it's on public property, it has to be on a leash, but they define it as park, beach, school ground, not just... So, I mean, if, if the dog was just on the street, that would not be a violation, I would not think.
It would or would not?
Would not.
I don't think it, because what they're saying is park, beach, or school ground is, uh, such, well, such as public park, I mean, I guess it's a... They just don't say that, if such person's pet animal is on a public property, such as a public park, beach, or school ground, and not on a leash held by a person, then you have a violation. And, and, but if you're talking about parks, if it's on the street, is that a violation, so...
Sounds like to me another code revision.
Probably.
But it does make you...
Or for next year.
Because I think we need a leash law.
But that's not what we're really talking about right now.
I know, I know.
So, the motion on the floor, I'll recap, motion on the floor is from Mrs. Rounds, seconded by Councilmember Fredericks, uh, to extend the Humane Society contract, or, uh, yeah, society, uh, Humane Society contract for three months without the 5% increase. Mr. Smith?
So, without the 5% increase, by my math, it's about 200 dollars difference, and we're gonna impact possibly for the next three months for 200 dollars, where they may, or may not create service or continue service. I, I would say keep the 5% on there, do it for three months, and then, uh, wait for their meeting.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item I, Humane Society Contract Extension for Three Months Without the 5% Increase.
Councilmember Graham?
Oh, sure, ask me first.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
No.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Action item has passed 4 to 2. Moving on to action item J, ordinance number...
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I just want to, uh, make a suggestion that if they come back and they won't agree to the three months, we could look at it again, so that we're not without service.
Okay. Perfect. Uh, action item J, ordinance number 1497, Personnel Policy, Amending Holidays, first reading.
I make a motion to, which one is that, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, that is action item J, as in John.
Okay, I make a motion to, um, ordinance 1497, Personnel Policy, Amending Holiday, first reading.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Rounds, seconded by Councilmember Chapman, Councilmember Rounds?
Well, it'd be kinda nice to try to get all of the holidays with all the different, uh, Teamsters and, and the exempt employees in mind, so I think this is a step forward in that direction.
Councilmember Chapman?
I agree, yeah, one simple, across the board, so we don't have 14 different contracts for 14 different people, and trying to figure out whose holiday's gotta watch. So, this makes a lot of sense.
Councilmember Fredericks?
But that's not what we're gonna have. You, you indicated earlier that that's not what we're going to have, we are going to have legitimately different contracts, we're gonna have, my guess is, is that, I'm just gonna throw this out there, because I've seen it, how many paid holidays do we have today?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 in the city of Woodland.
12, so in essence, we're trying to be at 12, but the fact of the matter is, is someone may negotiate a contract which requires us to be at 13 now, because we've adopted a new, a new federal holiday, correct?
But that, that would, uh, require a negotiation where we would have to agree to that, but it could happen if we agree.
But in essence, what we can do is, we could approve this, and you could still have contracts that allow for an additional holiday, um, if that's negotiated, correct?
Correct.
So, this, I get what we're trying to do here, but I wanna make sure that we're all aware that...
You might not know.
It sounds good, I think it's great, I don't disagree with it, but the fact of the matter is, it may need to be negotiated later, and I can guarantee you that we'll be making a change to this policy again, most likely, if that happens, but let's, we'll see. We'll see, I, 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 in these agreements, I see things get added, but getting things taken back, it's like pulling teeth. So, just saying, in my experience through this process, right, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith?
With this, it doesn't seem like it's taking away a holiday, it's just becoming floating, if you wanna take Christmas Eve, take Christmas Eve. It just opens the door for options, and my assumption is this is, uh, opening the door in bargaining for, uh, we won't give you this holiday, but we'll give you a floating holiday, and if you wanna take that holiday, you can.
Further discussion?
Is it the issue because it's Christmas Eve? Is that...
No.
Oh, okay. Because I've literally had to work every Christmas Eve, as long as I've been an adult working.
But I don't think it's that issue.
Okay. Anyway, never mind, I, I just wanted to clarify.
I'm, oh, I thought you said something else, I was, I was standing by. All right, uh, Mr. Chapman?
What? Thanksgiving Day, the Fourth Friday of November?
Uh, no, it's, if you look above it, it's day immediately following Thanksgiving Day.
Day after Thanksgiving.
Fourth Friday. Okay, I got it.
And on above that is Thanksgiving Day, Fourth Friday of November.
Got it, okay.
So, you get Thanksgiving and Black Friday?
And Friday. And Friday.
Yeah.
I can't complain, I get it all the time. Well, I have to work it, but I still...
That's not abnormal.
Uh, further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on ordinance number 1497, Personnel Policy, Amending Holidays, first reading.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Action item J has passed, the time is now 8:44, the Woodland City Council will be going into an executive session for current or potential litigation regarding RCW 42.30.110, Section 1, Subsection I. We will be in executive session for approximately 15, uh, we'll call it 16 minutes. To the room. Action item left on the table, which is action item K, authorize mayor to sign settlement agreement with the port of Woodland.
I'll make a motion to authorize mayor to sign settlement agreement with the port of Woodland.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Rounds, seconded by Councilmember Fredericks, Councilmember Rounds?
Well, um, I, I think we need to move on and try to, um, work together on this, so let's just move forward.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Nicely said, Ms. Rounds, um, I have a lot of comments that I'll keep to myself, um... I have some strong feelings about this. My hope is that, um, the future council and the board at the port, and the executive director at the port can work collaboratively together, is the nicest way I can say that, and so I support moving forward with this.
Further discussion? Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item K, authorize mayor to sign settlement agreement with the port of Woodland.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Action item K has passed, before we go this evening, I just wanna say again, thank you to Mrs. Graham and to Mr. Fredericks for your continued support of our community and your service that you have provided to us over the years. We wouldn't be in the position we, we are in right now if it weren't for you two. With that, Merry Christmas?
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year?
Happy New Year.
And I hope everyone has a safe and wonderful holiday, and, um, we will see you next year.
We'll see you the next year.
Time is now 9:05.
Do we need a motion? Okay, second?
A second, motion for a second, who, did somebody say something? Did I, did somebody say adjournment? Oh, I didn't hear. Uh, motion on the floor to adjourn by Councilmember Holland, seconded by Councilmember Rounds and Fredericks, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, you two, if you would like, I mean, you're both on your way out? Fire waiting in the meeting. Nice job, everybody, all right. What's this? Oh, oh, you're just turning your stuff in now?
She's out.
Oh, she's out, I'm out, okay.
He's out.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, who made the second?
What's that?
Who made the second?
Uh, right.
On the, that one, no, I think...
She made the motion.
Yes.